Call to order, Hammond City Council Special Meeting, January 6, 2020. Wow, big 2020. Roll call, please. Councilwoman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Wales.
Present.
Well.
Are we introducing this as a, for public hearing? This number three?
This is not an introduction.
Okay.
This is a, are you speaking about the next item?
Yes.
Okay.
Just an announcement.
This is a notice of a, of a public meeting. So, notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, at 5:30 PM, at its regular meeting place, the City Council Chambers, 312 East Charles Street, Hammond, Louisiana. The City Council of the City of Hammond, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the City of Hammond to authorize the renewal of an ad valorem tax. As described to the council on email, this is the upcoming millage renewal for the police and fire. We are asking for the exact same terms that have been done in the past, which is a 10 mil, and it would be a renewal for 10 years. That's the same terms as were passed last time, so it's exactly the same. There is no tax increase on this. It is merely a renewal. It does support salaries, equipment, and trucks, and vehicles throughout the police department and the fire department. The full breakdown and everything is going to be part of that resolution. But at your 28th, so January 28th meeting, you will have a resolution that you officially pass, and that will call for the election and set everything into process. We are looking at a May 9th election date, but these are all the steps that we have to take in advance to get on to that May 9th ballot.
So, this was just put here because we were already meeting today instead of next week?
Correct.
Okay.
This will start our clock.
Oh, okay.
And the clock is very important for how many notices have to be published, both in the Daily Star and then announced in the meeting as part of the minutes of the meeting. So, this is the first one. We will mention it again at the next meeting. We will have an official resolution at the January 28th meeting. We will then go to the State Bond Commission. We will have an ordinance done, just like we did for the last election. We'll then have the election, we'll call to ratify those votes, and then we'll adopt the final after that is passed.
Okay.
So, it's, it's here till May.
All right. Then we'll move to number four, history and discussion of the City of Hammond's pay system.
I know there has been lots of discussion this year since we had both some changes in the fire department side, and now we're looking at some changes in the police department side. And it's my understanding, from speaking with several council members, that it would be good to have just kind of an overview of how the system, how the city pays its employees. We do have several grids in place, and we have had a lot of differences over the years. So, what you've been forwarded in, in several various emails is kind of an overview. And so, we'll start with the biggest packet that's on there. It has a pay system timeline on it, and we'll start just kind of walking through some of these materials. So, in the big packet, you have both the two-page overview that was emailed to you prior. It goes over the ordinances. It also describes the pay budgets since 2001, shows you the raises that were allocated, shows you the differences in retirement systems. Just to remind you, we are involved in three different retirement systems. There is one for the municipal employees in general. That's what MERS stands for, and that's why I have munis and percentage there. So, the first column is the municipal employees. That's a vast majority of your employees. The second column, I'm speaking about this sheet right here in the big pay, in the big packet.
The big packet as in, this one right here.
The big packet that had the biggest number pages.
Yeah.
That has the binder clip on it that's colored.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're looking at page number two on this. Page number one is the summary. Page number two has the chart in it that describes the budget years from 2001 to current. Everybody on the same page now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the first column in that, the very first column is your budget year. So, starting in fiscal year 2001, the anniversary raise is the percentage of the anniversary raise. That's generally 2% or 1%, depending on which year you're looking at. When it changes from 2% to 1%, you can see that there's years 1 through 20 next to the 2, and then years 21 to 30 next to the 1. That indicates that the grid changed at that point, and the employees who were years 1 through 20 received a 2% raise. If you were year 21 through 30, you only received a 1% raise. And if you were after year 30, you received no percent raise under the anniversary column.
The 2% raise and then 1% accordingly, is that by ordinance, City Hammond ordinance?
It was all passed by ordinance. It was passed in different ways through ordinance. So, the variations on this from 2011 through 2017 were done as part of the budget. There is a specific waiver of the ordinance. We'll go through the pay ordinances in just a second, but I just kind of wanted to go over this to make sure everybody's on the same page, because I know these matters, these numbers matter, I think, the most to you at this point.
So, for the most vote, for the most point, for the most part, every year, there's either a 1% or a 2% raise based on the, based on the years, based on the years of service?
Yes. You can see in 2018, that changed. 2018, it went just to 2%. So, in 2018 to current, it has been 2% for all employees.
No matter what, like, they don't do that 2 to 1 anymore. It's just.
That's why in, in, on your chart, it says 2%, and then it, like, each year is outlined there.
From step 1 to 30.
Okay.
So, if they max out, they don't get an increase.
And 30 is the max out?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any other kind of percentage increases, like, that's just 2% every anniversary? There's no other percentages anywhere else?
In the next column over, it describes the cost of living percent, because that used to be factored in.
Okay.
So, the cost of living percent was factored in. You can see how many years that was factored into. It looks like that quit in 2011.
So, in the past, it looked like they had 2 and then 3%, so it'd be technically, would that be 5% technically?
Your total percentage is the next column. So, in the next column, it has the total percentage that they would have had in, in every year. And then, if you go to the column following that, that is the municipal retirement system, so MERS. That's the majority of your employees. That's the percentage that the city contributes on behalf of the employees to this system. That is codified by state law. We don't get to choose that.
So, that's all set. 27.5% was set by the state.
27 and.
27.75%.
Yes. That was our contribution for, that is our contribution rate for fiscal year 2020.
Yeah, and set by the state.
That is set by the state, correct. The next column is the police retirement system. So, all of your, the vast majority of your police are in that system. That current contribution rate is 32.5%. And then, the next column is your fire percentage retirement. That is also set by the state board. Your current rate of contribution is 27.75%. Those are all set by the state. We cannot change those. And we, we start to get those numbers come now. Right now, the fire one is doom and gloom, but we'll hope for a better one.
Does that stop at 30 years? Everything caps at 30 years?
The retirement system's cap at 30 years. The last column that I've included on here is the insurance cost per person, per employee.
And that just all has to go off of what our insurance is as a municipality?
That's correct. So, this is, and this is just the premium.
Yeah.
It does not include the Benny card.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to give you that breakdown, so you can see basically the cost escalation over the years.
Do all municipalities have the Benny card as well, too? Or are they all probably different?
Those are all going to be different.
So, probably should have probably had that Benny card, I guess, factor on that spreadsheet.
That would be difficult to do, because not every employee spends the same amount of the Benny card, and we do not max out the Benny card at all.
Okay. But it's still allocated, I'd imagine?
No, it is not the full budget amount. It's not allocated in the budget. What we do is we base it off of what we technically typically spend each year, because we typically only spend about 36, maybe 40% of the Benny card. So, we do not.
Do you know how the Benny card works?
We do not budget that.
Do I know how? From the gist of it, I mean, you spend up to, I think, $800, I think, on it, and per person, and then after that, it restarts, I think, if, if you hit your deductible. I, I think that was correct, if I remember, yeah.
It's 700 for an individual, it's 1,400 for the spouse or family. Then there's the donut pole in the middle that the, that the employee or that the person taking it spends, and then the city covers the backend. But that's only if you reach your maximum deductible. I mean, we've never, we've never paid the maximum deductible on every employee ever.
But it's still there for all employees. It's still a benefit, though. It's still a perk. It's still a good, a good deal.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. Also, on this sheet is a breakdown, since we are specifically considering police raises, and there had been some discussion about that. There's a breakdown in history from 2003 to the current of what the police officer made, their pay grade, and their total salary, what the communications dispatcher pay grade and salary, and what the jailer pay grade and salary. You can see the changes to those over the years and how they were all raised to the same point. Part of what's under discussion is changing that this year.
Are we going to get into the, the numbers and the pay grade and all that?
We absolutely will, yes.
I'll have questions then.
Yeah. Let's flip back to the first page, which is the page that has pay system timeline on it. We'll just briefly go through these key ordinances. I did not put all the ordinances that had dealt with this over the years. I put kind of amendments and just kind of floated them under the main thing, but I wanted to try to make this as simplified as possible. We are happy to provide more information. We are happy to answer more questions, and we are happy to pull together whatever additional information you would like. I want to make that 100% clear. But I also know that this is a lot to go through, and, and I don't want to just keep throwing stuff at you if you're not interested in it, or if that's not where you are right now. Y'all need to make financial decisions, and I know sometimes the nitty-gritty details are way too crazy, so. But just to give you some history, what's, what's underneath here in the big packet is all the, is all the ordinances and the state law. So, if you want to read these in detail, they are here for you. That was also emailed. The little paperclip part is the state law, because it's really just three state laws that truly impact our pay system. They're paperclipped together there, right under the sheet. And then, all the rest is the Hammond City ordinances that deal with this in detail since 1997. And again, if you have questions or whatever, we can, we can take them as you come, or we can kind of go through and, and see where we end up. But just to kind of go over a quick summary of the ordinances, so working off of this sheet. As you can see, in 1997 was the first comprehensive plan that was really put together. It was adopted by the ordinance in April of 1997. It established actually four pay systems at that time. One was for exempt employees, which were mostly department heads. One was, I'm sorry, yes, exempt employees. The non-exempt represented the majority of employees. So, think about your water and sewer workers, or your grounds workers, accounting, those kinds of folks. And then, your police had a, had a third system, and your fire had a fourth system. So, there were four systems at that time. That included the pay grades, which the grade is kind of the, the key point that measures you between other employees. That's how you set up the system originally. And then, the pay ranges. This was a pay range system, so it set a minimum salary and a maximum salary. So, there was a range in between those two of where you could go in each of those four systems. It also established a timekeeping system, that we would establish a permanent timekeeping system, because I think that had been, at least not regulated at that point. In that ordinance, it included definition for a merit increase. There was no specific percentage that was attached to that, but there was a merit increase pay raise possible. That was attached to your performance appraisal, which could be conducted annually or as needed. And again, there wasn't a specific percentage outlined there. There was an annual cost of living defined in that ordinance, and in that, it was a minimum of 2%, and it had this caveat of unless economic conditions prohibited. I don't think that was typically met, as you can see on the next page. There were clearly not economics, again. Those were changes, but basically, that was the, the cost, the annual cost of living. There was also recruiting incentive pay that was defined. At that time, it was $3,120 per year until eligible for state supplemental pay. So, this was for your fire and police side for that first year, because in their first year, they're not eligible for state supplemental, it kicks in, and then it starts paying. It goes from there. But overall, this, this pay plan, basically, as I was explaining, you know, kind of excluded several department heads, because it said at the very beginning that it excludes, like, my position was excluded. The fire police chief were excluded. There were some other key positions that were excluded from that. And I assume, don't know for sure, if they were calculated into the exempt system, because that's kind of captured a lot of the department heads. There was a minor amendment that was done, but it really didn't tweak anything too much. So, that's the first main ordinance that came about. In 1999, there was another major ordinance that had authorized adjustments to this plan. At that time, it excluded the merit increases and the recruiting incentive pay. So, those definitions were pulled out of the ordinance altogether. It also had some changes in pay grades, and then excluded again several department heads, same department heads that had been called out before, so that wasn't a real change. But there was another minor amendment later that year. In 2000, there was a new ordinance and pay grade established in July that established compensation based, based on rank and seniority. The main reasons that this came about is because there had been so many challenges in the fire and police systems, because of people being assigned the wrong pay, basically is what it comes down to. There were people with seniority who were earning less pay than people who were under them, and that's not how the system's supposed to work. So, in 2000, they adopted a system that was based on rank and seniority. This established more, what is similar to our current system and our current pay grids. The main changes are to those same definitions of merit increases, cost of living, like, that's the main section of the ordinances that kind of kept changing. For three years, trying to follow the implementation, it included a 1 percentage price index, I'm sorry, 1 percentage point above the consumer price index, along with a 2% annual unless you were maxed out. What they were trying to do is get everybody in the grid where they should be. So, some employees had to move further than others to get right, to get equal to where they should have been in the pay. And this was a way to implement that over several years, so that the city didn't have to bear the cost of that all in one year. So, they split this over three years, because it was a large adjustment at that time. At this time, it reserved the right to limit the consumer price index or the cost of living increases. So, you'll start to see those change again in your, in your map that you have, kind of of what happened from 2001 to current, because then those could have more flexibility and actually match the consumer price index rather than being defined exactly. It established a 2% raise for anniversary increases. So, instead of thinking these as cost of living, or, or however you want to call it, you may also hear this referred to as longevity raises, because that's really what the state calls it more so. These are required in the state, which we're going to look at in just a second. But established the 2% for anniversary, so every time you hit your anniversary date, so the date of your higher point, when you came to a one-year anniversary, you received your 2%. So, I think Councilwoman Dieterio, you had, you alluded, you know, like, when does that 2% come in? How's that word? How's it factored in? So, it happens on your anniversary date. It doesn't happen at the beginning of the fiscal year. It happens on your anniversary for each employee. The grid was based on years of service at that time, and it was a 2% for each year, again, based on your anniversary date for maxing out 30 years. So, it kind of mirrored the retirement systems. Again, it excluded several department heads. There was a minor amendment in 2005 to allow exempt employees to earn 1.5% of, 1.5 times their declared emergencies. This was after Katrina, because in that moment, everybody realized that the department heads had no opportunity to earn 1.5 times their rate, or 2 times their rate compared to other employees. And they worked a ton of extra hours during Katrina to recover the city. So, at that point, this is only during declared emergencies. It has to be in written form by the mayor declaring the emergency. It goes in coordination with a, a natural or man-made disaster, but it has to be written. It's not just something that happens after a while. There was another amendment that was done on 2013, because at that point, it was, it was, it was realized that employees who may have been on, on different types of leave may have been earning that pay even though they were not working during a declared emergency. So, that was removed and corrected at that time. In 2015, we went through another substantial revision of the ordinance, I will say, that kind of brought it into line with what had been happening as practice over many years. And at that point, the, it, it set the same grid that we had been having with 2% raises on anniversary dates and with the grid going to 30 years. However, it removes the cost of living raise completely from the definition as, as a whole. It can sit, it continued the 2% raise through step 23, and it allowed for 1% raise for steps 24 through 30. All the department heads were included in the grid at this time. That was what was recommended by the folks, and we all, we refer to them as MAGS, because they were Management Advisory Group. They were an outside consultant that had come in to do a review of the pay plan and a review of comparison of salaries, both internally within the city and a review of those salaries externally with other cities. By ordinance, this review is due every two years. We generally make it two years. Sometimes it stretches into three years for full implementation, because it is such a large undertaking. In many of the past years, we have hired a consultant to do that review. What we learned in the last two implementations of that with this consultant is that it's painstakingly cumbersome. And when you have a consultant who may not know your system, or who may not be as familiar with people, or who may just not work on the same deadlines that you wish them to work on, you almost end up doing more work internally than you do, than they do externally. So, after the last one that took many months to get right, after they left us, we talked about it with employees. We talked about it with the mayor at that time. We talked about it with the city council at that time and said, you know what? Let's give the employees a chance to do this and form a committee to do this review. It would be a checks and balance, so it's not just the employees bringing information and saying, hey, I heard that so-and-so gets paid this, or whatever. You'd have to, you know, provide information for that. So, you actually provide their pay plan, you provide who you talk to, you provide the emails or whatever. HR double-checks that information, so it's not that it's just a union bringing this information. Just so you know, we double-check all of that. And so, we, we started that, we did that with the fire this past, earlier in the year. We started that in last fiscal year with the fire and finished getting that accomplished. That brought them back. They were requesting to go back to the system that aligned their pay grid with years instead of steps. The main change that happened in 2015 is it went to steps, and the steps were based on promotion dates. So, they were date, they were based on the date that you entered into your highest position. And that worked okay for some, but then we started having some where it would come to a promotion time, and somebody that had less seniority than somebody with greater seniority, so somebody who had started working after somebody else was jumping them. And we started correcting those individually, and then you start doing so many of those and pushing so many up, and you start to realize it's a wave, because this one gets corrected and bumped, this one gets corrected and bumped, this one gets corrected and bumped, and you got to go up and up. So, we took the fire system as a whole, said, what do we do at this point? And that's when they said, let's go back to years. We tightened up their grid, so that the pay in between the firefighter and the operator and all the way up their chain would match what state law costs for, in terms of the promotions and the percentages. So, let's go briefly over the state laws. I'm just trying to give y'all all, give the background of kind of how the grids work, and we'll talk about that and then come back to where we are now. In state law, again, on your first sheet that says pay system timeline, at the bottom here, it kind of reviews the state laws that inform our system that we have to be aware of. The actual laws are printed out in your packet, but I've just kind of summarized them here and want to explain how they, how they impact our grids. So, the first to know is in, on the fire side, there is a, a state law there that describes percentages for promotions. This is a current state law. It has not changed. And so, way back when, they got this state law passed, and it establishes the difference between the positions and how that happens. We're on page one of the summary at the bottom of the page, and we're just looking at the quick summary of the state law. Again, we have the full state law in the packet, should you want to read the full state law, but we're just going over the summary right now. In that, it describes that the operator engineer should have 10% above a firefighter. The captain, the fire inspector should be 25% above the firefighter. The district chief should be 40% above the firefighter, and the assistant chief should be 50% above the firefighter. So, their grid essentially is kind of made that way, so that when they're promoted, they're insured that they're above that, that next pay grade and that that percentage is maintained throughout. Another law, state law, that impacts our pay grids is also under fire departments. It's longevity pay. After three years of continuous service, that they should receive a 2% annual raise for 20 years. When we researched this in the past, Andre was very good about his research, case law had established that this was indeed for years 3 through 23. At one time, the city had been doing years 1 through 20, assuming that 20 years qualified us under the state law, but in looking at how that case law had been presented, we needed to go to year 23. And instead of starting in year 3, which you could do technically, just do that, we start in year 1, and so, we went through 23.
So, state laws, 20 years of 2% increases, but we do 30, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
So, we do an actual seven-year over, a minimum, yeah?
Yes. In 2018, the council in that year decided for that fiscal year implementation, decided to just go back to the old system, which was 2% for all 30 years.
30 years, yeah, okay.
So, that's how that, that came about. Another thing that has been well-established is that those 2% and what you'll notice in the fire and the police grids is that those 2% are actually a little bit higher than 2%. And that's because you have to factor in their state supplemental pay, which is $6,000. So, you have the base salary that's listed in the grid. At each point, you take that base salary, add $6,000 to it, multiply that amount by 1.02 or 2% to get the new amount, then you subtract out the state supplemental again, the 6,000, and that's what the next step will be. So, it's slightly over 2%. I know that's very confusing, but that's one of the reasons that the grid was also established, is so that there wouldn't be mathematical errors or other challenges in implementing the system to try to make it as efficient for everyone to be on the same page and understand pay.
And that 6,000, that's a percentage, or is that just a 6,000 supplement for the whole year?
That is, that is a 6,000 that is set by the state.
By the state. And that changes, regulates over so many, or that's been like that for?
It has been that for, for many years now. There's been discussion about raising the state supplemental. That bill has not passed. So, right now, it is at 6,000. Should that bill change, that, that would be factored in. We would have to change our pay grid at that point, but we don't pay that 6,000. That is paid by the state.
And the 2% is on minus, subtract the 6,000 out of the 2% on that, yeah?
That's correct. But we do have to factor that in when we're, when we're doing the raise.
So, the 2% is required to be, to include the state, by state law, it says you have to subtract.
That's correct. That's correct. Another one that was important in the past, in, in past history of the city, was that in the fire laws, there is a law, and I've simplified this a lot, but state law is one captain per firefighting or rescue apparatus truck. That changed us tremendously in our past, because there were several people promoted to the captain position, which is a higher position, when our understanding of that law came about. So, that was several years ago, but I just wanted to make note, because you may hear some of that, and I didn't want everybody to be confused about what that was. So, there were several promotions that were made in that year to bring people up to that captain position in order to meet that law and understand that law. On the police side of the house, the state law that impacts us here is one that sets out the minimum salaries per month. This was quite an old law, as you can tell. Any full-time employee of the department must make at least $300 per month. The sergeant pay was 300. The sergeant pay was three hundred and thirty dollars per month. In parentheses, I have written out the percentage difference. That is not in state law. The amount of the pay is in state law.
So it's, it's dollars, not percentage?
That's correct, but I wanted you to have the percentages so that you would know how our pay grid system has been established. And it's because in the past, what the city chose to do was mirror fire department and police department. So in their, in their, in their ways of promotion and in their percentage splits between the different positions. That's why you may see with other departments that they may not have exactly the same pay differentials when it comes to promotions and positions. But that's why the City of Hammond does that, is because the fire and the police have, have been mirrored.
Are you saying that the fire, the police mirrors these, these ones up here under state law, or they mirror this down here under, because those percentages are different?
They, they mirror the ones that are down here, but I'm saying in general, because there's not exactly the same number of positions between the two, but you'll start to see how they mirror if we look at the grids in detail.
But if you do, if you, if you look at just, or the police, if you look at just the dollars and not the percent, the, the, the percent example that you, that you, that you have here is not going to be that from year to year. In other words, if you, if you doing a two, if you doing a two percent annual raise, that's going to skew, that's going to skew these dollars here.
Remember though, these are always based on the minimums, so.
It's not going to matter.
Where you start. It's where you start. It's not necessarily all the way up. It's, it's, it's where you start.
And it's for promotion purposes only.
We've used it to build a grid, and I don't know a better way to describe it other than that, to outline, here's where each pay grade is.
Minimum, minimum, minimum salary. But now does the starting minimum salary, if you give it a two percent raise every, if you get a, if you give it a two percent raise every year, that's still going to skew these numbers? In my mind, no.
So the minimum, the minimum must not, isn't getting the two percent, I guess, increase. You're starting off a minimum.
Right.
And then after that, you're doing the two percent.
The minimum never changes.
No.
Right.
That's, that's the standard, the minimum standard.
So like year zero, for each position, we start at a point and make those percentages happen. And then they each go from there.
So this number here that's being given up under the police annual salary per month, this is just based off of the starting at the rank?
This is, yes, and this is what's in state law. This is not what's paid now. If we paid this now, we would be paying, we wouldn't have any money more. I don't even know if we'd make minimum wage.
State law says the minimum that we have to pay a police officer is three hundred dollars, the minimum. But of course, our, our police officers make more than that. And if you look at the minimum, you see that those minimums from sergeant, lieutenant, captain to assistant chief adds up to a ten percent difference from the starting salary of three hundred and then a fifteen percent difference from that of a, from the starting salary of a, for lieutenant, a fifteen percent difference from the starting salary of a police officer. So we use that because these numbers here, the three thirty, three forty-five, three seventy-five, and four twenty are in the law. But if you look at these numbers and look at police officers first and look at what the starting salary is for a, a sergeant, well, that's a ten percent difference.
So your minimum, your minimum salaries established for all of these positions today
Right.
would mirror the ten, fifteen, twenty-five, and forty percent?
That's right.
Okay.
As from, from that of a sergeant to a, from an officer to a sergeant.
That's where we're trying to go, actually.
And, and.
Our current grid's higher than that.
It's higher. It's much higher. Right now, it's much higher.
It's not much higher than the temporary.
The difference, so the percentages are not mirrored?
No.
So these percentages are off these ten through forty percent here?
Yeah. That's the way they should look in the grid.
What do they look at right now, roughly?
I think you got a paper lacy. Yeah. I thought I printed it.
I don't know if the current grid says the percentage there.
Well, what they want to add.
I don't think I have it printed out. I think I have it on my computer.
Let's see.
Because it doesn't have the percentage.
What about this one?
This new one does, but not the old one, not the, not for the old one.
No, that's just total difference.
Percentage in the range, it's not a percentage difference.
Percentage in the range. Well, we could get that for you.
How, how is the, how is the minimum salaries for each position determined? Where does that come from?
From the, um, from our pay and classification review, salary and classification reviews that we do. The company make a recommendation as far as the starting salary for those positions or those particular, uh, yeah, positions, and we use that as a starting salary. And then that number is carried out by two percent throughout that grid.
Does that answer the question?
And those, and the, and that, this company that does that, they do this every two years? They do this?
Yeah. Well, they did. They did it for us every two years, but we think we're going to go to someone else. Uh, what we want to do, we want to involve the employees, but like you just mentioned, where do we get those numbers from? And that's something where we need expert, an expertise, someone with the expert in compensation to tell us that. We want the employees to have a part in it, but of course, we don't want to just put numbers on your, on your, uh, on your desk to say, hey, this is the number we're going to use. We want to make sure that those numbers are in align with laws, uh, make sure the city isn't sued in any way. So we want to make sure of that before we just give you a number to start off with.
So do we consult with some kind of company that, that advises us that these rates that we have currently are off or on track as, as opposed to our revenues that are coming in, our population, the man of work and everything else there? Is there some kind of company that we consult with or that deals with this on an everyday basis?
That's what the company that we were using did, and for the most part, they would give us options based on our budget.
Yeah.
They may say at ninety-five percent, the, the salary that the people need to be at is probably a ninety-five percent increase or something like that. Well, if the city's budget can't maintain that, then there's another option that you can go to whereas the budget can maintain that salary for that particular job. If, um, if it comes out, okay, with your company being at ninety-five percent of the market, let's say, then this is the salary you need to be at. But if your budget can't maintain this, then here's another percentage that you may want to go with, sixty-five or seventy-five percent, based on your budget, the city's budget.
It may be easiest to look at, um, the comparisons that we pulled for, for police, and this is just to have an example maybe. It, it, this sheet has the City of Hammond, thirty-step grid, it has Hammond, two columns for Hammond going all the way across. It has Amy Baker, Baton Rouge.
So, so what made y'all pick these here? Like, why wouldn't, you know, like, the sheriff department or any, or any other, like, closer municipal, closer departments be on this that we'd be actually in competition with?
So we are in competition with several of these places because these are also civil service systems. So a lot of these are both with, near us. People were willing to travel this far, but they also don't have, um, they also, I won't say don't have some of the flexibility, but they're under the civil service. Many of these are under the same civil service rules that we're under as a municipal police department. So it's important to realize that, like, we can compare against, um, a lot of the sheriff's offices and whatnot, but they don't have the same rules. They don't have the same structure that governs them.
So Amy's the only one in a whole parish that has?
Um, Amy's the only one that has a large enough police department to compare with.
Okay.
We didn't pull upon to.
And Livingston, Livingston, we got Denham here, Gonzalez.
We had Walker earlier, but we didn't have a chance to, to compare them.
I would just think, you know, you're competing against, I mean, somebody living in our area would probably look at the Tansville Parish Sheriff Department. Would probably look at, would probably look at Hammond. Well, I understand, understand that, but these sheets showing like where they're at to get an accurate, well, oh, we really below everybody else or above or whatnot, you would, you know, if somebody's trying to get employed, it probably, in our area, they'd probably look at sheriff, all the city police in general in Tansville Parish, the parish, Tansville Parish and all them.
If you would like to see that comparison.
I could tell you now that the city's making more than the sheriff.
Okay. Yeah.
I could tell you that.
Yeah. So, I mean, I was just saying, you know, I mean, when you're doing comparables, you would think the closest in proximity would be good to use to see within a mile radius.
And on to that.
And incomes, revenues, like, you know, you got all these hourly rates and everything, but, you know, I don't know if Mandeville, you know, i- if their income as a city whole is, do they have more, are they bringing in more money? Are they, are they paying from tax dollars from property as well figured in this? Or is it just off of sales tax and just all the, you know, all of, those are some factors to kind of look at.
So in, let me make sure I understand. So you would like to see better comparison of the overall budgets and how the revenue sourcing happens in each city?
Yeah, and how much percentage are we actually, you know, that we're paying out of our tax dollars or to the police department, our police department compared to other municipalities that, percentage-wise? Yeah, yeah, and, and population-wise as well too, and, and pop, I mean, population, I mean, as well too. I mean, if you're fighting crime and somebody has twenty thousand or thirty thousand residents compared to sixty thousand, I mean, you would think typically, if you have to govern sixty thousand crimes residence-wise compared to twenty thousand, you're probably going to have a little more work cut out for you on sixty thousand people compared to twenty thousand. I mean, those are just factors I think of, you know, comparing New Orleans crime as far as murder rates and everything else. I mean, I'm pretty sure that, you know, it's going to be tougher to get somebody that wants to be a policeman in New Orleans at some point in time than it would be in, in some other municipalities with, uh, maybe less people or less, less crime.
I think with that, you're also assuming job quality. I mean, some people are just basing it, you know, on how much money they can make.
Well, they, yeah.
We, we have a good idea of who leaves us to go to which city, right? And I'm sure that's factored into the people that you provided, right? A lot of people travel quite far.
So you want to look at more of the demographics as far as population?
Yeah, and, and, and you also got, I mean, health insurance too. I mean, I was in a meeting the other day with, uh, the city insurance guy, Pow, and they made it seem like Hammond, City of Hammond has one of the top insurance policies provided to municipalities as far as like coverage-wise and deductibles and everything else. That, that all, that all costs us money. That's all a factor in everything. I mean, so. I mean, that's a big factor there when you, when you're looking at the whole, the whole dynamics of the pay. I mean, just because they're not taking it home doesn't mean it's not coming to them indirectly. I mean, it's, I mean, it's still got to be, we still paying it. The city's still paying it. I mean.
I know Amy pays a hundred percent. Baton Rouge doesn't pay any of their benefits. Covington pays.
Doesn't pay any of the premium?
No. Baton Rouge doesn't pay any of the premium for their employees.
See? Car allowances, I mean, do all, I don't know. I'm just asking, do all the other municipalities and, and ones we have on comparable, can they take their units home? I mean, I don't know if we can or not. I mean, are we able to, are we able to take our units home to all, you know, wherever they go? I mean, are the other municipalities letting them do that?
They go within, ours go within a certain range.
Certain mile radius, okay. How, I don't know what these other ones.
Which is also beneficial to us as a city because the more police units you have staying in various locations.
Well, I understand, but I mean, I'm looking at it in money aspect as far as those are all factors and gas and everything else. I mean, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples, apples, oranges, oranges, and not just saying, okay, well, you know.
Mandeville pays their premium for their employees.
So you said, uh, certain mile radius. How many mile radius are we talking about?
I believe, is it thirty-nine or is it sixty? No, it's not. We, we just changed it.
It's in Tansville Parish.
Thirty-five, we think.
Okay, but the sheriff department, they keep all their vehicles right in Tansville Parish. Yeah, they do, because I go, I travel one ninety a lot, and I'm wondering why all the sheriff cars out there? And I found out that they not allowed to take their cars in, uh, St. Tammy Parish.
Outside of the parish limits. We could, we could look at something like that.
We're saying sixty mile radius?
No, thirty-five.
Thirty-five mile radius.
And I believe the way that we came up with that figure is we did the distance, I know this was talked about, doing the distance between here and Campwood. We could certainly look at that something different.
Yeah, because I'm looking, and I'm talking about, I guess it was about two, three years ago, I'm looking at cars coming out of Mississippi. I'm talking about off of fifty-five, then I'm looking at cars coming out of Mississippi off of ten, I ten. So I don't know what they transporting the prison over there or not. I don't know what they were doing or going to the casino. I don't know what was going on. But this is what I saw, you know, a couple of years back.
And I just think, you know, I, I just, you know, looking at a spreadsheet here, I just think there's some, you know, maybe some details that maybe, uh, need a little more thorough details that might need to be presented whenever you're starting to, you know, look at increasing pay rates and everything else. Just not saying, oh, well, you know what, we need to play, pay these people more money. Well, I mean, do we, do we not? I mean, everybody wants to make more money. I mean, everybody does.
They've, they've been researching a lot of those.
And, and Councilman Divatirio, it, it is, it, it's a process. When we're talking about getting all those benefits from cities, uh, one thing I didn't find difficult, um, to get was the pay for those municipality, but when you talk about getting all the other information from them, it's, it's take time for them to get that together. So with the short period of time that we've had, that is something we want to spend more time on, is getting all of your, all of your demographic information, um, what you're asking for.
Because I mean, it's a big decision to be made.
Absolutely.
And, and when you, when you do this, it's not like there's, turn it back. If something, if, if money comes to charge, you know, but, okay, well, y'all policemen, we can't pay you.
And the city does. The city has wonderful benefits. We have wonderful benefits. You know, for the most part, most of the municipalities we talked to, their holidays are based on the state holidays that they receive. But we do. We have a lot of benefits.
And, and those two days we increased, uh, police. Now, does that, does that pretty much, how does that compare to all the, within a forty-mile radius? I don't know however you want to do it, uh, as far as holidays. Are we pretty much neck and neck with everybody or?
No, I can't, I can't say that. Um, like I said, when I presented that, we presented that based on what the clerk was doing and what the, um, government, city government was doing, parish government was doing. And the clerk's office had sixteen and parish government had fifteen, and I mentioned that during that meeting. And I don't know if other municipalities have all those holidays. I do know they have twelve holidays.
Well, and that's another big factor on this, when you, when you're dealing with these, these pay rates here, because if some of these only have, in Lafayette or Zachary or Covington, if they only have twelve, uh, days off or, or thirteen, they're not getting time and a half under the other four or five, sixteen days, or they're not getting those days off. So I mean, I don't have a clue. I mean, maybe that's why some of their compensation's a little different because they're only getting, uh, twelve holidays. I, I don't know. I mean, that's not my forte, you know?
I understand. I understand. I understand.
I have one question that, and I don't know if we can be answered today or not. I know that, uh, when a policeman is hired, they go through posts, and the city pays, they're salary paid, pay for them to go to post.
Right.
And I know a lot of these guys are, are leaving after they get post-certified to go to other departments that are paying more. And to me, that's, we taking a loss on that because we're paying for this. I don't know if it's due to civil service or what, but is there a way that it could be put into their contract? At least that they have to provide at least two years of service to the city or something like that? Or if they leave, they have to pay that money back that was spent on post?
There might be something we could put into that.
That's a good.
Into that law. The, uh, cost of post, I think I just signed off on one, is nine hundred dollars per person. And, um, so, but we could look at that because we could look at what the cost is, maybe what the equipment value is of getting a new uniform and that kind of stuff.
Sorry, I mean, that's cost like actual dollars spent, but isn't there a time that they're not here and have to cover their shift and so they're being paid?
They're being paid to work, but they're not being.
They're not working in the city.
They're not, they're not assigned to a shift.
Right, right.
So, we're not, we're not bringing in somebody overtime to, to work a shift. They're not even factored in yet because employees working on a shift. The, um, the main thing to realize is that, and, and maybe what we could also look at there is, uh, how long they are serving with Hammond before they move on. That may be a faster way to look at that because I, I would think it's pretty rare for somebody just to be two years. That might be correct. There might be one or two that are that way, but the majority of ours who have been leaving are a little bit more long-serving and they have been going to the state police, which you can tell, uh, just on this summary. Currently Hammond is paid fourteen dollars and ten cents an hour. State police starts at twenty-three dollars and eight cents an hour.
And, and that's.
There's no way we can compete with that.
If we're losing to the state, I mean, that's just, hey, that's, that's just congratulations to them. I mean, they're trying to advance their career and their, I mean, we can't compete, as municipal, we're not going to compete with that. So, I mean, that's another fact. We keep hearing these stats like they're leaving us for other departments. Well, I've heard a lot of them leave, but the ones I've heard have all been the state police. So, I'm not saying that's the only ones, but I mean, that's another factor there for losing them. Or named, not, I don't need to know names, but I mean, is it ten? And if it's ten, how many of those are going to the state police and how many are going to other, other, other municipalities or other parishes to work? I mean, if ninety percent are going to the state, well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's going to be a problem no matter what. No matter if you raise it to whatever extent, I mean, unless you raise it to what they're paying, which that's not going to happen. So, I mean, so that's another point there.
I don't know if our problem, our problem isn't necessarily with people leaving. Uh, it's not necessarily a retention problem. Surely that's always going to be an issue, but it's more with a recruiting problem. It's, it's more a challenge with getting people to come to work, um, and stay working. And so, part of what we're looking at, and that's why we're looking at the starting salary so much, um, and having this discussion, that's really what, what started this emphasis. Um, but we can, we can look at a breakdown of where they're going, how many are going, and, and which departments or where they're ending up. Um, and maybe a why, I know, uh, HR department does exit interviews with each employee, and so sometimes that gives you good clues and insight into why they had to leave. And sometimes it's merely personal reasons, you know, family mismovement or something like that. Other times it's I'm going for this better job with more pay or I'm going to this other place. Sometimes they'll tell you exactly why it is, you know, sometimes it's just more general.
So, we can get that fax, actual documentation, that'd be great. Yeah, and then, uh, and, and so, I mean, I may be jumping ahead, but this number down here with total salary and then total requested.
Which paper you own, Councilor.
On the grid sheets here in the lab, all the names and everything.
Yeah, the one that has red at the top, it's, it's the only color copy that she has.
So.
It's on page two.
Yeah, so, so we got, so what, where did, where did this projection, like, this is what they're asking for, requested, total requested, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, is, am I reading that right or no?
You are. Um, so, what, what is there is the, uh, that is if we move the grid and we have a new starting pay, instead of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one annually, it would go up to thirty-two thousand, five hundred annually. Um, and that would be the new starting pay and how that gets reflected through the grid all the way up. The total salary cost of that is in that last column there, three hundred and nineteen thousand, eighty dollars. The retirement and FICA impact of that is a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So, the total required for the annual budget, um, is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. And I'm so sorry because it looks like that last line did not print out, which would be our, what we would need to make the rest of the fiscal year, for this fiscal year, but this is the total impact which would, you know, be reflected into the July budget, the total impact.
And one other thing I had, I, I think when I first started, and I may have misunderstood, but, I mean, the fire department, when, when they were coming up, they were pretty much, well, how it was explained to me and what I gathered, and a lot going on at that time was that they were trying to fix maybe a problem that was in the, in, in the actual, uh, grading or step plan or whatnot. Not so much as a pay increase. Obviously, they did get some pay increases, but it was a faulty system that was kind of improving. So, it wasn't like, here we are, we need pay raises, more so, let's fix a problem. This here, to me, looks like a pay raise. Am, am I understanding this correctly or is this fixing a problem that was?
It's, it's accomplishing two things. So, one, it is a pay raise. It's starting, it's, it's raising the starting pay and going all the way up. Um, and, and that's the pay raise reflected there, starting pay, all the way up. The second thing it's doing is it's moving them from a grid of steps, which means like, um, for instance, uh, if you look on the, on the front page, let's go to the front page, and, um, uh, a good, a good example is, uh, the assistant police chief there. Um, you can see in the years column, it has thirty-five years, so that's how many years he has served. But in the current grid, he's on step twenty-five. So, look two columns over there and see current step. He's on step twenty-five.
Yeah.
Because it's done based on promotion date, not based on years of service.
Yeah, and another thing is.
And that's what you do with the fire department?
That's correct. And, and the important thing to realize there, that may not look really important right now, but the challenge there is that, so for the next five years, because they're on step twenty-five, instead of step thirty, which would be maxed out. So, for the next five years, that person has a two percent raise. And potentially however many times, however long.
But that's for one person, pretty much, that fell into a weird, that fell into a system at the right timing. It's not, I'm not talking about ten people, we're talking about a guy that was promoted, I guess, earlier in his career, a, a, a little faster rate than, than, than some.
There are, there are four people who would be maxed out right now.
Yeah.
If we were still on a year system, but they're not, they're on the step system.
And another thing that contributed to that was that with the last review, the pay grades were increased. They may have, he may have been at a two thirty-seven, but in the new pay grade that was completed in twenty seventeen, his pay grade went up to a two forty-two.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that would have also changed his salary because of two thirty-seven, of course, would be lower than a two forty-two. But in order to place him where he's supposed to be based on his promotion date, then that moved him further back.
And, and so, this, this, uh, current and, and the one, the, the ones that they're proj, uh, proposing here, where did, where did these figures come from? Was this just saying, hey, this is what we want to make, can you get this, make this happen? Like, wha, wha, what kind of factual, or like, what was this based on as far as, you know, current fifteen, four, I mean, uh, fourteen, ten is, is current pay, and so now the proposed is fifteen forty-eight. What calculation we use or anything to figure out this, you know, let's bump it up to fifteen forty-eight, not fifteen fifteen or fifteen ten or fifteen dollars or fourteen fifty?
We ran several different calculations. Uh, we ran a thousand dollar increase, we ran a two thousand dollar increase, we did a three thousand dollar increase. This is closest to the three thousand dollar increase. This is also based on the comparisons with the other places that are on this sheet. Uh, there were a couple of other places that are not listed here that were also comparisons, and I don't know, I think they just haven't been verified yet by HR and that's why they're not on this sheet yet, but they were on the original sheet that we looked at, because I know Walker was on there and I can't remember who else. But, um, as you can see going down, uh, right now we are at the bottom.
Of, of these that are on the sheet, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, we were at the bottom of the other sheet too. There was just more on the other sheet. They just haven't been verified. But that was, we were at the bottom of that sheet too. And, and we're at the bottom by.
By, yeah.
By several cents per dollar, not by just a little bit.
Bottom by the hourly rate, but, but none of the, uh, the, does it, it doesn't show any like the other factors like take home cars on here? Any, any gas or?
Yeah, we understand that you want that comparison. We're going to work on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's a factor. I mean, let's.
We're going to work on that.
So, you, you're saying, you're saying it's, it's roughly a three thousand dollar increase on the entry level officer?
Yes.
Okay, and that equates to percent?
I think somewhere around ten.
So, when we get higher up, did you do that, how'd you, how did you get, how'd you increase across the board?
We did two steps. One, we did it, um, according to, we built a new grid that tightened up the percentages so that they would mirror state law. Right now in our current grid, the percentages are higher.
Wait, 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 wait. State law based on a hundred and forty dollars a month or state law based on ten, fifteen, twenty-five and forty percent?
Based on percentages, based on the way.
See, that's, that's skewed horribly.
Okay.
Because that's not state law. State law, the way I read it, correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, the way I read it, it starts out, it starts out at three hundred, it goes to four twenty. That's a hundred and twenty dollars a month difference. When you look at these, when you look at what y'all did, you're going from three thousand dollars up to what, eight, nine thousand dollars?
And, and these percentages aren't current anyway on this sheet. So, I mean, those are some facts of.
These percentages are what, there's not percentages in state law. There's dollars. What the City of Hammond has done historically, since the beginning of establishing a pay system, was mirror the fire and the police department along with the rest of the city. So, we could look at, we can look at all the positions and we can look at how those fit in together. What we try to establish is that positions with similar responsibilities, similar duties, and that are mir, are, are matched up within the city. So, we can, you know, we can, we can do something wild and look at it as, you know, just the dollars. What I'm telling you though is the domino effect of that will be to, to challenge the entire pay system for the entire city, which we, we can do that, but it's a different way of thinking through things.
I guess my question is, the whole, well, there's two questions. One, from what you're telling us, by ordinance, everybody's getting a two percent raise every year anyway.
That's correct.
Period.
That's correct.
No matter what we do.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so that's, that's a given. Now, what we're trying to accomplish is a higher, a higher minimum wage or minimum, minimum starting pay in order for better recruitment.
That's correct.
Which I think is great, but how is, I mean, are we, where's our recruitment need? Is it with the police officer or is with, or is it with the lieutenants, the captains and the police chief?
You can't come in as a, as a lieutenant, captain or police chief.
So, how is, how is giving them an eight, nine thousand dollar raise going to help our recruitment?
So, our challenge is going to be that if you don't go all the way up the grid.
Well, wait, we are going up the grid on the two percent for everybody.
That's correct. Our challenge is going to be is that if you raise that starting salary at the bottom of the grid, and then when it's time for that police officer to be promoted to sergeant, and it's time for that sergeant to be promoted to lieutenant, they're going to get jumped. The people who have been down here, they're going to, they're going to earn more than the people who are already working here at the top. And they will not have worked the same amount of time, but they will earn more money than somebody who has worked here longer. So, we would need to redo everything is what I'm saying.
Well, and another thing I want to ask, I mean, y'all didn't have all those facts anywhere to take home and, and the insurance and all. So, I was just trying to figure out if y'all didn't have that together, like, did y'all look at everything whenever y'all factored these proposed fifteen forty-eight cents per hour, like, with the three thousand dollar income? I just, to me, it just seems like I'm not really hearing a lot of, uh, a lot of research being put into the three thousand dollar increase across the board. That should have been probably done, unless I'm missing something to get to that three thousand dollars. Like, I, I just don't know why it wasn't two thousand or a thousand or fifteen hundred or, or like, what, what came up with the three thousand dollar deal? And, and like, Steve made a comment, I know that, that's a problem. It seems like if you up the bottom, well, then, you up the starting pay, then, then you got a problem when if they get promoted, they may be making less or not getting, or not making as much as they should because they, they jumped up higher from, from the start, from, if they.
Yeah.
So, but then you got some of these other guys in here that, you know, are going to be all getting, you know, pretty good raises up on the top, that, that's pretty much our problem. I, the pay raise problem from what I gathered is like, what he said was, it, it's recruitment. So, obviously, we're not recruiting at the top, but it's, it's a domino effect. But to, to me, I, I don't know, I, I just think there might be, should be a different way to address this.
What does your consultant say as it relates to the minimum starting salaries of these positions? When you do what we're proposing to do, how does that eight, nine thousand dollar raise look on what they're, when you grid it out or, or, or what they're recommending? How, how much higher are we or how skewed is that?
Do you mean the difference in the top positions?
Yeah, in other words, in other words, you're saying that your consultant comes up with a minimum salary for police chief, lieutenant, captain, sergeant, all the way down?
And they take all that into consideration, what you're talking about, as far as what other cities are being paid, the benefits, the perks that they get and whatnot. They take that up in consideration. Now, I don't have that information to show that they take that, but I do know they do.
Do they take that into consideration?
Right.
So, at the end of the day, when we're saying we're three thousand dollars off on a, on an office, on an officer position, they're also saying we're nine thousand dollars off on a captain's position.
But not, not the, not the consultant that we use, they're not saying that. This is something that, um, like Lacy said, we're allowing the departments to do research as far as their, um, where, what type of grid they would like to see, just as we did the fire department. So, this is a result of some of the information that, that department obtained, uh, through their research of calling other, other departments, okay? But with, as far as the consultant, that's probably why we got the rate that we do have for police officer, uh, that we're currently paying police officers. That's probably why we're at that rate. But we see in our area, we can't recruit at that salary, even though the city offering all of these benefits, we just can't recruit officers at the salary that has been recommended. Now, you know, there's.
Well, I don't think anybody has, I don't think anybody has an issue with that.
Right, we just can't do that.
I understand what you're saying there.
And I think that's why that salary.
I can't wrap my brain around, I can't wrap my brain around why we, we have to do, we, we, to get more recruiting, we have to, we have to go all the way up, we have to go all the way up the line at the same percent.
Right, right, right. And, and there could be other options. If you look at state police, the state police grid is, is up to twenty-one or twenty-five. They don't have a thirty-step grid. So, there are options we could go through, whereas everybody is treated fairly and this will be the police grid, you know, or citywide. But we need to do something that's going to be consistent, that's going to get that starting police salary up.
Well, I mean, it says, is there's any kind of legally perk or something incentive we can give to the entry level ones, like for recruitment wise, like for their first two years or whatever, six months, year? If it's, if they, you know, uh, live in the city or if they, whatever, I'm just using examples of something they'll get like a stip, uh, or.
Huh?
Like a bonus? A bonus or stipend or something for the year deal?
We can't give them a bonus. We can't give them a bonus. I don't know how New Orleans made out with that living situation, but I did notice that the state police, what they do is they have a grade for recruit. They have a grade when that recruit gets post, and then that person moves to another grade once he completed his, um, FOP training, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is training, at the post, yeah. And then it's that FOP training. I don't know how long they let their people go through that training, but then they get that raise. And I think field training officers, uh, wait. And what we gave you for state police is the supplemental, once they get supplemental. That's the pay that state police shows on here.
Well, I think.
We didn't do the recruit because they only last as a recruit for six months, you know? Uh, yeah, they only last, uh, recruit until they receive post. And then you go to post, the police, the state police has a salary once they obtain their post. Now, I don't know how long their field training lasts, but there's a salary for that too.
To, to me, I just, I think if, if our, our real big problem here is. To me, I just, I think if, if our, our real big problem here is, is recruitment. I would think there'd be a creative way that we could address that recruitment problem that would look a lot better as far as when we're trying to recruit, getting the newer guys started out, as opposed to having to go across the whole board when, you know, when, you know, some of the higher-ups, I mean, or, you know, I mean, they got pretty, you know, good salaries or whatnot, and, and that's not really our problem. Our problem is supposedly the recruits. I think we should concentrate on somehow money moving around, or something, incentives, or whatever it may be legally. I don't know if Andre could look into that, attorney-wise. I mean, I don't, what, what's legally that you could do for incentives for any, any newer, newer recruitment?
You can do it as a part of an employment contract basis. It can't be a bonus for existing employees for extra money, but you'd have to do it as part of the salary scale or salary compensation.
For, for new recruitments, yeah.
I mean, I don't see a reason why you couldn't do that. That's a part applied to everybody. It's not a bonus percent.
Yeah, whatever you want to call it.
In ordinance for what the pay is.
For, for new recruits. I mean, if, if that's a problem.
Well, we still will have to get at a, a salary that will keep them here.
Well, they get increases every two, two percent every year they're here. I mean, that-
But if we're doing some sort of bonus at the beginning, and I don't want to call it a bonus, but I mean-
Well, let me tell you this, it's a bonus, let me tell you, let me help you with what they mean by bonus. A bonus is a payment for past performance. You can't do that.
No, what you do, do it-
You'd have to do it on the front end.
Some type of incentive.
Yes.
But if we did an incentive that had a sunset on it, because we keep emphasizing that this is going to be an incentive for short-term to help recruit. So, if we did an incentive that had a sunset on it, the important thing to realize is then that at that sunset, are we going to lose now well-trained officers who've been dedicated to the city?
Well, it'll fall off. It'll fall off at some point in time, and then it'll pick up to where it's, it's within, I mean, this is just coming up now. So, I mean, yeah, you would have to put a little time into creating this, this incentive and a transition state that would, would not affect the whole department, but would affect the problem, if the problem is recruitment.
But say it's, they need three thousand dollars to get to what we say. Let's just take that for what, that's the wage they need to be at. So, say your incentive is three thousand dollars for three years. Well, after three years, it goes back down, and they, you would lose them. You can't do that. You're two percent, you can't, I mean, how long would it take you to get two percent to get to where you're not losing any money when your incentive sunsets? And then you're at somewhere where you didn't actually earn any more money for all that amount of time.
Right.
Like- Another thing I want to, I want to notice too is that, you know, we look at some of the, we look at some of the higher-ups, and I, and I hear that as being an issue, but, and, and we can break this down in a different way, too. It takes fifteen to sixteen years of a police officer before they become a sergeant, because it is a rank and seniority system. It's not something that they can just take the test and then they get the pay. They have to take the test, and then there has to be an opening. So, someone has to retire or leave in order for that spot to open. So, there's only a certain number of, of higher positions allowed within the civil service system, within our department. So, there's only two, there's only one assistant chief position, there's only two captains' positions. I think what we have, like, ten, maybe fifteen, I could count them quick, lieutenants, they're listed. Same way with sergeants. There's not a lot of these positions that are the higher ranking people, and it takes a large amount of your career to get there.
Well, I think there's a lot of stuff there. You know, you got two percent increases going on for thirty years, I think maxed out. The state requires twenty years. We're given an extra-
The, the which number?
And it state requires at least a twenty, twenty years.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
For, for two percent, but we're doing thirty years, so we're doing an additional ten years of two percent over what the state requires. So, I mean, there's a lot-
Not what the state requires, that's just the state police grid.
Oh, it's place, okay.
The fire, the fire longevity, and that, that is what a lot of other systems follow, in municipalities.
Longevity, yeah.
So, if you have both a fire department and a police department, I mean, we're not doing something that's totally wacky out of other places, is what I'm trying to say. Like, they, a lot of places have mirrored the two to work together, again, thinking through the whole sys, the whole city. So, when, when we look at our salary reviews, they step back and they look at each position and they say, what are your responsibilities? What kind of safety issues do you have? What kind of supervisory issues do you have? What kind of, like, big equipment do you have? Somebody working as an accountant may have a keystroke error and cause a big financial problem, but somebody in public works may have a steering error and cause a big equipment problem that would be very costly. So, it's not just in looking at college degrees or not college degrees, it's looking at all of those factors together in order to create a comparable system citywide. And in our experience, the, the way that, and you can think through it, I mean, if, if the fire received it, if we went by state literal law, and we went fire, you have a, a two percent raise for years three through twenty-three. You're the only people in the city of Hammond that will receive that. You have the rest of your city that you're, you're going to try to explain why the fire department gets a two percent raise for years three through twenty-three and nobody else does. And, and that's, I mean, you can explain it, you can say, well, it's state law. But you can imagine what's going to happen morale-wise if that becomes the way that we have literal interpretation of the law. And the, the way, you can also look at the history of what this city has done, and I think the city has done a good job of, of scaling and looking at what is reasonable within the budget, but that is also something to consider.
Miss, uh, ask a question.
Sure.
I'm in and out, because I ain't used to being in no meetings at no twelve o'clock. But, uh, morale-wise, I heard you say that, and I talked to the chief, and that's what I was asking about the clerk. So, talking about the police, them getting a raise, no clerk's getting a raise, no jail is getting a raise, and no dispatcher's getting a raise. Now, you just said morale-wise, and I was telling the chief, why would you come into a system and cause, and cause a division? You know, because if I was the chief, and if I was the head of everybody, I want to get everybody a raise, where we can all be on the same page. I mean, even as the firemen, and like Sam said, when we first started, they got a raise. And what, seventy thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Right.
Fix it, yeah.
Right, that's more to fix the pay grade, that wasn't a starting rate.
Okay, I live with seventy thousand dollars any day, anytime. We talking about what, three hundred and-
Four hundred and twenty-seven?
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. It look like, I, I keep listening, I'm hearing a problem. Okay, I'm a truck driver by trade. I will work for you for two years. You give me a ten thousand dollar, uh, bonus, or what did you say?
Incentive, incentive, yeah.
Incentive. You give me a ten thousand dollars incentive, and you break it down, every five months, I'm going to get X amount of dollars. After them two years up, I'm going to quit you. I don't care what you doing, what you say, and I'm going to go to the next trucking job and get another ten thousand dollar incentive. And I'm just saying, this is what I do. I'm going to tell you, I ain't going to give nobody a lot of time. And I'm saying, as a policeman, I wouldn't stay with the city and get him a long time. And I told officer, I told a couple officers that have been there a while, the reason we do this here, the reason we worked there so long, it's because we comfortable where we at. I don't know what the police do now, don't get me wrong, but if I'm a high-ranked officer, and I know that's all I got to do is go to work, punch in, I don't even know if they punch in or not, they probably just say they made it there at that time, I don't know how they do it. But they go there and they do that, and so if you do this here every day, honestly, we do the things we do because we enjoy what we do and we are comfortable at our position. But I'm talking about so far, it looks like the biggest issue we have is trying to recruit officer to stay in Hammond. But you know what? There's no guarantee that I'm going to stay in Hammond, and it ain't about the money. It's everybody come. Once I get the little experience that I need, I'm going to take it to the state. Why I take it to the state? Because once you go to the state, you get to bring your vehicle to your house, back and forth. You don't have to use your personal vehicle. So, I don't know how the police department do with their vehicle, why, because even with the state. And I'm going to switch up. The state set their, and this what they did, the state drive their vehicles. And what the governor did, in order to save money, they had them guys to drive their vehicle to and from work, not going to the grocery store, or they can drive their vehicle, I mean, they can drive the state vehicle to the gym only. And you know what? They save so much money just on fuel alone by doing it. And so, I'm talking, and this what I look at with myself. I don't work in Hammond because I don't see no money in Hammond. That's why I don't work in Hammond. What I'm talking about, if I had to do that there, it's an incentive for all the police officers to drive the vehicles. Because I think I read, what, how many police do we have altogether?
Uh, one thirteen?
One thirteen. And how many vehicles that the police department have altogether?
I don't know.
I don't know that.
A hundred and eight.
Yeah.
A hundred and eight. And, and you know, it's funny, when we ask questions, that we don't know this, we don't know this here. I'm not going to do no research, or, or trying to find out how many vehicles we have. I ain't going to do no research, see how much gas the, uh, police department use and the fire department use. You know, what I'm saying, when we ask questions, honestly, that's because we don't know. And we're just trying to find out.
Right.
But if I have to, I can't do the research, because every time we've been asking questions, I see we, we don't have that information, or, or we can get it to you. Uh, what, forty pages, sixty pages, was sent out Friday, am I right?
Four, four, five, yeah.
Sent out Friday afternoon, and we knew this meeting was coming up for how long?
About two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks. And I'm talking about, as a city, I'm saying, we have to do better for everybody, because you know what? I would say they play too much long, I ain't even lying to you. What I'm talking, we got to do better for everybody, you know? I don't have no problem with getting nobody a raise. Everybody know that. Mr. Loretta, I went to Mr. Loretta's office, hollering and cussing and stuff, hold up, hold up, sit down, just wait a minute. Say, Mr. Loretta, we got to get these people ready. We got, no, that ain't how you do it. We got to sit here and work everything out. So, we have to just come up with a better system to help everybody, you know, not just the police department, because I'm talking about the clerk that we use. I love for her to have a raise.
That, that was the city's overall plan. So, in last fiscal year, we dealt with the fire. In this fiscal year, we were addressing the police, and in next fiscal year, we were addressing the rest of the city. The reason, and I, I want to address just a few, I'm going to try to answer some of your questions. We may not have all the information today, and that's what I emphasized before, is that we already pulled together, we worked really hard to pull together a lot of information once we found out that the council wanted to have this meeting. So, what we're trying to do is, is make it easy to understand, but we are perfectly willing to bring more information to you. That's why there's not a motion on the table to accept any of this today. We're not trying to rush this, we're not trying to force this. We're here to answer and help you understand your questions. That's why we're here. So, I, I don't want, that's, that's why I'm saying, please ask your questions, and we will be happy to come up with more information. I cannot read minds, and so it's helpful to have a meeting. This is a discussion meeting, and that's why we're having this. It's, you know, we did, we knew that we couldn't bring you everything. I, I wish we could, but I can't, I can't answer questions that I don't know aren't out there. And so, I want to, I want to address a little bit about what you talked about. One, we do have a take-home vehicle policy with regards to police vehicles. They are only allowed to go to, for instance, the gym or the grocery store on their way home. It is not a go outside, you know, take twelve, run twelve errands, use your personal, use your, your, your city vehicle whenever you want. Those are the only allowable ways that you can use a vehicle. We have even had some people ask, and they have to do it in writing, you know, can I take my kids to school on the way of me coming to work? Can I drop off my kids, dah, 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 dah? And we have gone through the insurance carrier and everybody else to ensure that this is okay. But those, those have all been approved, if there is some sort of like, extra thing that's happening on the way to work or on the way home from work. But the purpose of the city vehicle is to facilitate work. It is not to facilitate personal errands. It is not a vehicle allowed for them to take to the football game, or to go down to New Orleans, or Lafayette on the weekend. That is not the purpose of the police vehicle. It remains parked. They must have a personal vehicle to do that kind of stuff in, just to make sure. And if that is found that they're running around using their, and that is, you know, people will take advantage of whatever they might. But if that is found, then there's an investigation conducted into how they're using that vehicle. And if it's found to be using against the policy, then they will be disciplined for that. So, there is a policy that governs how that is used, that sounds a little bit similar maybe to that state police policy. The, there was that mention, and I know this was, this was a tough decision for the chief to make and for the unions to make, and for several people who've been involved with this, the decision to, to leave the records clerks without a raise, the jailers, and the dispatchers. Part of that is because the jailers and dispatchers in other place, our jailers and dispatchers are highly paid as compared to the police officers. So, if we compare our jailers and dispatchers in other locations, their pay is already, our Hammond people, some make much higher than what they do in other places. For whatever reason, in the past, they were all brought to the same pay grade. Whether that was a responsible choice and a good choice to make is up for discussion now. And I think what everybody is realizing now is we don't have challenges in the records, or in the jailers, or in the dispatchers in recruitment. And so, again, we go back to that. Our challenge is in the police officer side, and so that's why they wanted to move forward. The other side of that is that, in that, in that other side, many of our jailers, communications, and all the records people are not state supplemental. So, their pay grade is, it starts with a one. They're actually attached to the rest of the city's pay grade. So, their comparisons have been made with your council clerk, or with our department secretaries, with everybody else who does not receive that state supplemental pay. And so, there's, there's this attached over here. So, if we pulled them out, we would be pulling them out and making another grid just for those positions, those three positions. We can do that, but it's a little more complicated than what we have done in the past, and so that's why that was not proposed at this time. But if this is a way that we want to move forward, we can do that. It's, it's not that we want to say no to any suggestions, because I think the more we hear, y'all even talk to other people at other cities and other governments, the more we hear about that kind of feedback, we can do those comparisons. But again, we don't want to necessarily just throw everything out, you know, baby out with the bathwater and bring something brand new, but, but we can, we can look at that. So, that's why it wasn't, it wasn't to leave them out. It was to focus on recruitment, and it was to focus on if we moved them now, we would be looking at the entire city needing to move now, and our plan was to address that in this next fiscal year.
To follow up with that. First, I have two issues. One, I just want to know if you could find, this is a question for y'all's research. I'm, I'm okay with this starting salary. I think people need money, not just incentives, and our police starting pay is too low. The, all these places, do they have the step-up for the seniority? And if they do, is it, is it, does it match what we're proposing? How much of a pay difference is there from sergeant to lieutenant to chief to, and all of that? So, just so we can see, especially some of these that we are very comparable to, pay-wise, what they do. So, we know if what we're doing is how, how other people do it. The other thing is, I think there's some good value to the idea of taking the people in the one-hundred grid in the police department away from the city and make, because I've talked, as I'm sure most people have, to some people who are not, who would not receive money under, a raise under this, particularly the records clerks, and it just, it doesn't seem fair. And we can tell them all day long that, you know, in the next fiscal year, we're going to, we're going to do that. But first of all, that doesn't make them feel any better, and how do we know we even have money to do that next time? We're right now about to increase, if, if this passed as is, increase the budget for over four hundred thousand dollars. And then you're taking the rest of the city, and I don't know how many employees that is, but then how much are we increasing the budget for that pay raise? And with those record clerks comes all of the other people who are in that same one-hundred. Well, is there a different, I mean, should the police records clerks be different than the city records clerk? I don't know that, I don't know everybody's jobs. But they certainly feel like they need a raise, they haven't gotten one for a long time. And in fact, to Devon, I think we have a big morale problem if, if we do this with the police officers and leave behind at least the records clerks, who means three people, right? It, it seems very unfair to them.
My little comment was, just that, I made a comment about the incentive deal. I, I just think that if the problem we have at hand right now is, is recruitment, I think there should be a way to be able to figure out a way that costs less than a half a million dollars of increase to address the problem that we have in recruitment. And that would be, if there's some kind of incentive, I would like at least an option, or something that we may can look into possibly getting, not saying that would be the fixed all, but at least, you know, spend some time maybe coming up with some kind of option that would, that would address the problem, and that's, that's recruitment, from what I've gathered in the police department. So, if we can get recruitments and can, can address that problem less than a half a million dollars, I mean, I think that would be the goal to, to get to, or, or better than, than that. So, I mean, that's just, that's just my thoughts, along with a lot of the other things, making sure these recruits know that, well, if you go over here to this one, you might actually pay out of pocket another thousand or two thousand dollars in insurance to, to this other municipality. So, concentrate on all their perks that they literally have, like, yeah, you can go there and go there, but you have that. Or they may not, you know, do the two percent increase the whole thirty years, or whatever. I don't know if they all do that or not in municipalities, but actually get educated on exactly what, how do we compare to some of these ones if they're lining us up? I mean, the take-home pay may be fourteen-something, but if it's, that's just the net, and it doesn't include all the other things that are being offered to them, and the other ones are higher, but doesn't have all these other categories, well, then that's not really, they just don't know that. And when they get there, they may realize that, but, you know.
I think that's a good point. I'm not saying you're wrong for that. I just think that when you have a nineteen-year-old who's entering the police department, you know, they're looking at how much money are they going to get?
how much money are they gonna get to take home every day? And that's what their factor is of how they're going to choose to come to Hammond or not. If it's a recruitment problem, they need to see money.
That's why they're incentivized, they're looking to incentivize you, that, that's, that's my opinion.
I don't know how you worry.
You have your call, you have your opinion, I have mine.
I'm just wanting to say I don't disagree with you, I, I think that.
Well, I notice.
Good points to both.
I know what State had did this year, and we all know this here, uh, Governor Edwards. He was in office for four years. And what he did, it's a hundred thousand school teachers across the state of Louisiana. He sat there and gave the teachers a thousand dollar raise. Not two thousand, not six thousand, a thousand dollar raise. He gave the teachers a thousand dollar raise and the support workers, uh, five hundred dollar raise. And all this here plan was set up within three years of doing. And I'm saying, here we come up with a three thousand dollar raise. You know, honestly, who do that? I ain't, never in my life, never in my life I ever got a three thousand dollar raise on nobody's job. Now I done went out there and did my own jobs and made three thousand dollars. But I never got a three thousand dollar raise. And I'm talking about, if, and I told you earlier, if it's recruiting, if it's a recruiting problem that we have, I think we need to focus more on that than just sitting here, just giving out a big raise like that. Cause I'm talking about, we talking about a three thousand dollar raise, honestly, I'm gonna go back to her. Now, I know she probably emailed me and cursed me later on, but, uh, okay, give her a three thousand dollar raise. I'm talking, cause every time I called and asked a question, uh, Councilman Wells, let me get back with you. And she come up with an answer, so to me, I'm like, if anybody gonna give a raise to, I'm gonna give a raise to the person that, that helps me out and try to make me a better councilman, you know? And then I know they say the council gonna get mad, and we get him a raise, cause I had to call and ask no question. And like, Devon, I'm gonna answer your question now, cause I don't want you holding me up in the council meeting. So I'm saying, we got to find a better way. I'm saying, it's the recruitment, if we have a problem with, let's solve that problem. Cause I'm talking about the doors that we about to open up, and the mayor now, he'll tell you, we got into, I said, man, we gotta get these people ready. Devon, hold up, hold up, hold up, you just can't come in here touring there. I said, no, man, we gotta get them ready. We sit down and talked about it, and you know what? He said, we gonna work on it. And that's from him to Ms. Loretta, I talked to her about it. Now, now we call them the small people, get the small people raised. I have nothing against the police at all, but I look at it like this here. They drive the cars, they ain't buying no gas. And then you say they ain't paying no insurance. So I look at it like this here, everything we do, we do, we do the jobs that we have because of the little perks and bonus that we receive. That's why we do these jobs. So, uh, Carly just said it, honestly, if I'm new, nineteen years old, getting out of school, wanna be a police officer? Yeah, I'm looking at the top sheet, I ain't worried about all that other, other stuff, I want to see how much I'm gonna take home. And I'm talking about, well, we can't call them what, bonus incentive, we have to find a way, in New Orleans, a prime example. New Orleans, they sit there and give out a seven thousand dollar incentive. That's what they get, but you know what? You have to be there nine months in order to receive. So it ain't like they just going through the classes and, uh, being a police. After they be there for nine months, then they receive the money. Then they not just getting the money at one time. You getting two thousand here, three thousand here, that's after the nine months.
Yeah, we didn't even include them on here, because I think they're closer to like fifty thousand starting.
Yeah, but they getting people killed every day down there too, so. You have to keep that on there.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't even include them on here because they're so, so far different from us.
Yeah.
And Baton Rouge right now is on here, but they just did a report in, in May of this past year, and they're looking at a, a much different, I mean, they're already at fifteen eighty-five an hour, they're gonna get much higher. Lafayette is the one that just changed to sixteen sixty-four. Um, and so that, that's, you know, some of them we didn't even include.
Yeah, and their population is a hundred and twenty, eight thousand.
And let me, let me do a quick summary of where I think we are at this point in terms of stuff that we need to bring back to you. Uh, just to make sure I have everything on my list, that we're, we're trying to make sure we've got everybody's, stuff that you really wanna see and analyze and understand before, you know, for our next meeting. Um, and again, the next meeting may be another discussion meeting. Uh, because Councilman Wells, I appreciate what you're saying, and I know, I know you didn't get this. Our, our intent was just to kind of step through it, cause it is so, it's wonky. Like you start really thinking about how much we do and how much, who, who gets what and where, and it's a lot of pages and it's a lot of stuff, and it makes you go crazy. What I have down on the list, um, is to compare with other cities' budgets and their revenue sources. We can do a quick outline of that, we can include that in our overall.
Population too.
Population, yeah, let me go through the list, please.
Before you do that, I need to step off. Remember that the nineteen year old kids, that's the only ones we can truly track, cause these thirty-five, forty-five year old people that have been firing and policing for a while. When they step into the civil service, they go to bottom of the grid. So we can't bring them on. And what, if George was a TPO at some place and wanted to come to us, we couldn't get him when he would be making.
We have to start them as police officers.
With someone like him is something we'd love to have, so. It is a catch-all situation where we're trying to get to. Why are we doing it stages? Because of the cost of the overall firemen, you know, not everybody's. Police officers, I see what you're saying about the three. Compare their records to our records, and they shouldn't be any different between records clerks if they're making the same or if they're not making the same. But where we miss out on, because of the grid and civil service, bringing them home, is we do get those younger ones. Grandma, I met a young lady from Santander today, and I said, you're not gonna leave us after we put you through post, uh, certification school? She said, no, sir. I said, well, we a lot safer over here. But competing for qualified, experienced people is a, is, is a killer for us, pay wise. I realize you say perks, but for most people and, and, and whether it's government or businesses, they getting insurance. They may not be getting car allowances or phone allowances, but they getting insurance, this kind of standard. And if you wanna throw in, you know, we have a lot of holidays, but you know what? That's at least a benefit to us holidays. We can make up work anytime in government, in the way, the way things are controlled in our system. Pay is the killer, and I understand some folks are like, you know what, well, we know what we're doing, and we're civil servants to some extent, to some extent, but it's a job. And these people have families and lives and, and people that, that they're responsible for, so it's about the job. Why don't you do it all at once? It's a cripple for us. So gradually going into a plus hour vision plan. Firemen last year, it was a long process. Now it's police, and it's been a long process, I'm coming. Um, and then the regular worst force. The only, the less than, you know, the three, the three records folks, you know, are they comparable to our records folks here?
They're all the same pay grade. So the utility clerk makes the same as the records people.
You said that the, uh, doing it in steps, doing it all would be crippling, well, I mean, if this takes. I know, but, I know, I'm not saying you're wrong, but like, if this is, this is one of my questions, is if we're, if this takes a month for us to get to this, whatever we do, but then we're only three, four months away from doing the budget where we're gonna be giving everybody pay raises, and so it's all happening at once anyway.
I have to compare with other cities' budgets and revenues, the populations of the cities. Uh, specifically with, with the positions, the insurance payments or how much is paid in premium versus bank cards or those kinds of other perks. Other privileges may include cars or uniforms, um, or other, uh, incentives, holidays. Um, their car policies, because some may limit where the car goes, whether it's outside the parish limits or whether it's miles radius. Um, we want to provide, in terms of the people leaving, uh, the breakdown of how many have gone and where they're going and perhaps why, if they have given us any specific reasons. Um, we wanna look more specifically at the first years of service in other places and what they are using as incentives to recruit officers, and whether there are differences in pay or differences in other incentives for those first years of service. Um, we wanna, uh, we need to get the number of police officers versus the number of vehicles and also vehicles used, because some of ours are pool vehicles versus assigned vehicles. Um, and then, uh, to compare pay of others with records, dispatch and jailers. Uh, that may be a little challenging, because most municipalities do not have jails, but we will look at those that might, uh, can or Shreveport and some other places. Uh, dispatch is also handled by nominal one in a lot of places, but we can do some comparisons there too. Um, and then, uh, uh, to, to look specifically at the grids within the police departments, the other police departments, and look at the, um, annual raises, so whether there's a two percent or whether there's more provided there, um, and the promotion differential. So what happens when you move from officer to sergeant or sergeant to lieutenant? And, and look at that. And then, uh, again, hearing what Councilman Wells had said, uh, considering the small people will then raise for everyone and looking at how the citywide implementation would look, and giving maybe some perimeter, uh, some, uh, initial, sorry, budget projections.
Lacy, on the, um, what we're, what we're talking about proposing now, going from the fourteen ten to the fifteen forty-eight, I think you said that's approximately two percent, or what, what, what percent was that?
No, it's approximately ten to eleven percent.
Okay, to go, to, to do what we're, to bring these minimums, to bring these minimums all the way up to what you're talking about.
Right, if you change, yeah, if you change from a twenty-nine thousand, three thirty-one to a thirty-two thousand, five hundred, that's about a ten percent.
Okay, so when does that ten percent go in, would, would, if it, if this all passed, when will that go into effect?
It would have to go into effect after the ordinance was adopted. So, uh, this would all be passed, again, by ordinance, so it would be introduced at one meeting. It would be approved and up for public hearing and approved at a second meeting. And then there would be the, the implementation date would be after that.
So this fiscal year?
That's correct, but it wouldn't be this full amount. This is what the full fiscal year amount would be, I had it on that sheet, but for, I don't have it printed out right here.
So, so then.
Cause it's based on how many pay periods we have remaining. I believe now we would be somewhere around nine or ten pay periods.
I understand. So then we would move into the next fiscal year, and they would get their annual two percent raise.
That's correct, based on the new amounts. That's correct.
Based on the new amounts. So they're getting, they would have a ten percent raise, and then another, and then another, and then another two, and then, and then another two percent raise.
That's correct.
So the dollar amount that, that you're talking about, just four hundred and twenty thousand, or whatever that is, that's not gonna be the dollar amount that we're gonna look at for next year, it's gonna be that plus another two percent.
Perhaps, you still know that.
Well, it's not perhaps.
Please let me explain. Um, there, there are people who retire. We already know we're looking at two of our top level people, um, who are planning to retire in March, April. So, uh, as people retire, your budget stays pretty similar. It doesn't necessarily balloon out each year, because you have attrition. So people retire, other people leave, you know, there's, there's things that happen. It's not necessarily that your budget gets bigger and bigger and bigger. It does get bigger because of contributions, that's why I wanted to show you about the retirement and about the health insurance and those kinds of factors that happen. But overall, like, it's not like we're just gonna see a, an explosion, another, another big balloon. We can, we can, we can try to project some of that, but I can't tell you exactly how many people are gonna leave, but it would be a similar number.
Before I have to leave, and I, I have to head out, but I just wanna say, by no means I'm anti or not wanting to, uh, by asking all these questions, help out policemen. So I wanna make that clear. The problem is, it's a half a million dollars moving around the budget is a lot of money, and it needs to be made sure that it's not just moving it from today, because five years from now, all those continue to increase over the years, and it's a big decision, and it needs to be made. And you just don't really wanna rush that decision without making, I'm just worried about five and ten years down the road and you continue to make those moves and making sure that we do the right thing the right way and make sure that we're actually taking on the problem at hand, if it's recruitment, rather than just snowballing and putting everything together. We may be able to get this addressed a lot cheaper than a half a million dollars and still accomplish the ultimate goal is improvement recruitment, from what I gather. So I just wanna state that there, by no means I, I want any, the police officer to be not compensated for what they do every day. It's just that I, I think that we may need to look at it a little harder to come with a, a better game plan on that, that's just my thoughts.
Well, I think we all, you know, I certainly believe I can speak for everyone, I think we all wanna help out the police. It's just, you know, how can we do it to where it's fair for everybody and helps everybody, helps recruiting, and something that we can afford? You know, you're looking at the four twenty, then in a couple of months, we're gonna be looking at that plus another two, plus another two percent. You know, it just keeps adding, 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 and I don't wanna get in a budget, budget, I don't wanna get into budget hearings in a couple of months and, oh, well, we gotta start cutting this and cutting that and cutting the other because of what y'all did. Yeah, you know, we can't, we can't, yeah, we can't, we can't fix drainage, and we can't, we can't, you know, do streetlights and so on and on. So, you know, we, we just gotta, we just gotta really look at this hard and look at the down the road effects that it's gonna have while trying to help everybody.
Right, right. That's, that's one reason, I just wanna, uh, I know everybody's time is, is important. So I wanna go back to this chart again, that's on the second page of your summary, that shows you what the total increases have been in the past, and then how those change. So it's, some of this is not, I know, I know it may sound like a, a lot right now, but if you look in the past, there were a lot more increases in the past. Um, and, and so that's, you know, kind of, some of this may be catch-up, um, in, in terms of recruitment too. But I, I think we've got a good handle on, and I, and I'm so glad, you know, y'all have spent your time here today so that we can get some more information together, so that we can do a, a better comparison, um, of apples to apples, kind of how everybody's talking, of what is in other departments versus what is in our department, and maybe come up with some creative solutions. So if there's other things that come to mind as you're leaving here, you know, later today or whatever, or if you go, hey, I just heard about this one, shoot it to us and we'll be happy to do that work for you. I don't want y'all to feel like you gotta go out of your way, pull it together, so we'll be happy to do that too.
Can you tell us the, another thing, really sorry, is, uh, the pros and cons of separating out the other ones from the grid of the city? And if that's possible and why we would or would not wanna do that, just so that we.
It just doesn't, it just doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like it's that many people, it doesn't seem like it's that many people, you know?
Very simple. That's a very simple thing.
Create extra bureaucracy, is that what we're doing? I think you're just not, don't understand.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And you know, and that may even help them down the road as well, and help the police down the road to, just to separate, separate that.
That's right. And it will be, uh, an additional pay grade for the police department. And they will be there, uh, you know, will have a grid just for communications, jailers and records. Yeah.
And we know that everybody's gonna feel that you're never really adequately paid what you feel that you're worth. And, uh, coming from a law enforcement side, I understand. I trust, I really understand. But, uh, we took an oath to do what was right, so we just wanna make sure that we do it what's right and don't wanna leave anybody out.
Thank you all so much.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Certainly.
All favor.